Counselperson Bradley? Counselperson Kemfer? Counselperson Gennova? Counselperson Becker?
I'm here, your honor.
Counselperson Fisher? Counselperson Chander? Counselperson Picarella? Counselperson Massa? All right. Uh, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the movement of the community development block grant down to check register or committee reports, after committee reports?
Sure. I'll make that motion.
All right, I have a motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Adam Clark, has the agenda been posted, dated and signed? Perfect. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November twenty twenty-two. I want you guys to have a moment to look those over. We had several ordinances at that time.
I'll move to approve those minutes from November.
All right, I have a motion and second. Any discussion on those? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, public comment, we have two. Uh, Mr. Shilly will come up and speak first. Mr. Shilly, you have the floor, sir.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Evening.
And I know, I know you all have been working on this for quite some time, back when I was mayor. But I tell you, whenever I, uh, I go through town and you go up, uh, from the Baptist church, First Baptist church, up to the Catholic church, there's twelve white posts there, dual lamp posts, six on each side. And what I would like to see is, right now, we do have some, uh, uh, real nice flags on there as far as season greetings and Merry Christmas and whatnot, that's great. But after the season is over with, and I know we've been pushing for it for some time, to get some flags made that truly identify that that is Crystal City. I mean, as soon as you pass the church and go on into Festus, Festus got all their flags there. And you know, with the new people coming into town and whatnot, as soon as they make that turn going west on Bailey Road, they think they're in Festus. Crystal City on those, at least those twelve flag posts. That's all I got, and I appreciate it.
No, I appreciate you coming to speak. Uh, we've been talking about it for a couple, several months.
Yeah, we were talking about it back when I was mayor.
Yeah, uh, and I agree with him then. Uh, the example we have in front of you, obviously you change street names to Bailey Road, whatever it is, or just Welcome to Crystal City. This is just a prelim that, uh, Ms. Meyer at school is working on these, and, uh, she sent those over. I mean, we talked about it, we're just, I was gonna get you a couple to pick from and go from there, but I, I mean, I'd like it sooner and better if we, if we like this, uh, change the design to just, and I have it on my phone, at the top, it would still be red, and it would say Welcome to Crystal City. Have the water tower back there and go from there on that design. If you guys are comfortable with that, we can send that out for bids and go from there. But.
I, I like the idea. I, I would probably wanna have somebody look at the, uh, the type with an eye to legibility, 'cause if the, if you can't read that when you're driving twenty miles an hour, 'cause nobody goes twenty miles an hour, but theoretically, they're going twenty miles an hour. Um, if you can't read it, it's not gonna do any good, you know, 'cause it.
Anything else, welcome to Crystal City.
Right, and that's exactly.
I love the idea.
Yeah, I mean, just a welcome, exactly. Right there on Bailey, I mean, I, we've kinda been saying this for quite some time, we just haven't agreed to a design or anything like that. So, I mean, I can print out an email copy of it. Uh, the flag size would be two foot by three foot, basically, twenty-four inches by. Or we could do four, I have the, uh, uh, the banners that were from, uh, the Centennial for that size of, if you guys can remember those banners on the Centennial size. Um, we have all those banners, they just have, you know, writing at the bottom of them.
And if nothing else, uh, keep its colors here, red and black, your font, however you wanna do it.
Yeah.
If it shows up, you know.
Well, we'll have proof.
People that are from here, I know where they're at, um.
Yeah, no, it's, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Shilly.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Clayton? You have the floor, sir.
All right. Hi, everybody. So, I'd like to ask if I could potentially get the street shut down on my way down for a, it wouldn't say beside project, or a, um, last paroxysm. Uh, I'm doing a web series or historical horror about Crystal City, and I'd like to film on the city avenue at seven eighty, so there wouldn't need to be all of the streets shut down, just from about the top of the bridge right there, above the guard towers, and it would be from eight AM to ten AM on January seventh.
I'll tell you the week is, uh.
Saturday. Believe us, Saturday. I tried to ma- I tried. What's the timeframe? From about eight AM to ten AM.
Two hours, I'm saying. Does Dave's week matter to you, is Sunday less traffic than Saturday?
That's what I mean, it's. Physically, yes.
That's, I don't know if it works with you, I, I don't know.
Whichever would work better for you, I mean, I could do Church.
Yeah, I don't know, it's like, how much, how much traffic church have at that time, I, I don't know.
You want from, from our, from our towers, the top of the bridge there.
It wouldn't affect the church, that one, that's a very good church.
Yeah.
Your preference, Sunday or Saturday, chief?
Well, I'd give it, probably Sunday would probably be my preference.
Yeah.
Sunday, it would work for me.
And I would say probably from one intersection to another intersection, as opposed to, you said, just the top of the bridge to a certain, but like, yeah.
All right. Yeah. One eight, twenty twenty-three.
It's kinda funny to think about the time when I was about ten years old as a historical fiction horror series, but, okay.
No, I'm excited to see what you have in the works there, so.
Yeah, I am too.
For anybody that is wondering, I did send Jason a copy of the trailer, um, but, so I don't know if you had to reach out to him if you're bad.
Yeah, we.
Okay.
Yep. All right. Thank you, sir. Uh.
I'll move to approve that request for January eighth, uh, from eight to ten AM.
All right, I have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Check register and bills. Mr. Becker, if you have anything to add on that?
I'll move to approve the check register and bills and the sales tax report as presented. I do wanna point out that the, uh, use tax numbers are creeping upward. I believe it was a little over fifteen thousand for November.
Yes. It's, it's creeping up, and, uh, we do have those funds going to a separate account, so it, it's all itemized for streets, what we promised the citizens, and, uh, I'm having our, and we said it, Tom said it, uh, our citizens need commended. I'm getting calls on, how did you guys pass this use tax? How did you do this? And, um, it's our citizens, and that's, we, we owe it to them to get that done, and, uh, I'm excited to see some of the, the roadwork start, so.
And I have to also commend the rest of the council, uh, the unanimous support that that had with all of us, uh, going out and suggesting to the citizens that was a good idea. That was something that most communities in Jefferson County did not have, so.
Yeah, we did. I, I thought we did a, a great job on that, so, all right. Okay, I have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, we're waiting for Dave.
I thought we said that we did that after the committee reports, so we can go ahead and do this.
All right. Committee reports are in your packet. If you guys have any questions, I, I wanna talk about, uh.
I, I got on, uh, uh, more of water issue we had over the weekend, uh, a few phone calls, um, it was posted on Facebook, online, she told me. People that don't have Facebook, how do they get any input? It was the phone calls I got, well, I don't have Facebook, I don't have Facebook, I don't do that. How, how can I get input? It was put on, I didn't, I didn't get any. Uh, they said, I would call, I would call, I would call, no answer.
Yeah, I, I don't have a, a good answer on if you don't have internet on that, but, I mean. Mr. Shilly?
Yeah, no, yeah.
It was on the radio and.
There was terrible, I was on my own Facebook, as you said, but, you know.
Mr. Shilly? You have four?
Yeah, Mary, in the past, they would call, uh, they would call dispatch, because the water department supervisor, you know, he supervised dispatch and that. Matter of fact, it's usually the police department that picks up on that dispatch.
Okay. Okay, well, we, they did do that, we just. I know the. You have an idea? Go ahead. I, I don't know if we have that, I was gonna say, we, at, at school, we have an auto dialer to where we just click it and. Well, let's check, let's check and see if we have that capability to send like an auto dialer out, like, like the school has, and then. And then.
At, uh, at minimum, I think we should probably have a standard procedure where, if it's something that is a big enough deal to put on Facebook, we should probably put, um, like a, a message on the auto attendant, just a, a recorded message on the auto attendant.
I agree with that.
Although, in this particular case, uh, what I wanted to say about this was the, the water department got that fixed relatively quickly, I thought. I mean, uh, I was gone all morning, so by the time I noticed it, the, the water was only off by about, for about another half an hour before they had it repaired.
I, I was out of town.
Very impressed.
I was out of town, and it was a pretty big, uh, pretty big break. Uh, the reason we didn't have to do a boil water was everybody continued to have, the water, they fixed it, it was still flowing out, and nothing went into the pipe, so. Uh, as long as that works, to my understanding, there doesn't have to be a boil water act, so, uh, so we were pretty good on that. Um.
I have a second part to that, too.
Go ahead.
Uh, I don't know exactly where it's, I'm guessing, was it over at Eleventh and Missouri Avenue?
It was a left, right by the high school, right in front of the high school, correct? I, I'm pretty sure it was right in front of the high school at eleven.
Yeah. No, not right, okay, go on. Who, who questioned me about it, said it was over by the cemetery, where it always breaks.
Nope. Yeah, it was a, they got it done with a live thing, I thought fairly quick, and. Yeah, uh, eight inch line, and the, um, the street guys were over there today, because when they noticed the break, uh, the, um, sewer lines were broke there as well. So, they were able to identify that problem, come back and, uh, fix that in front of the high school. So, the street crew was there this morning backing that out and going from there. Um, Chief Bobas is in your packet, uh, had a lot of trainings and stuff in there. Uh, Mr. Sullivan's is in your packet. Uh, Mr. Turner's is in your packet, I have something to add on that. Um, Turner's aware of the forecast, he has equipment ready, greased, ready to go, and, uh, the guys are trained on their routes, so. Yes, sir?
Can I add the, uh, street sweeper thing I've mentioned to that, since we're?
You can, or round table?
Yeah, I thought, since we're doing, since we have some time to kill now, I thought I'd bring it up now.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I, I sent out an email about the fact that, uh, on VFW Drive, the, the quarry's street sweeper appears to be, like, maybe in need of repair, you know, according to my, my witnesses. They, they said it, it's kind of like a bad vacuum cleaner where, you know, you're vacuuming and it just blows the dirt up into the air. And it's particularly bad over there, because the dirt on the street is actually silica sand, and it's very, you know, fine particles, and it gets it, and all the bushes and all the cars and, and the houses and stuff like that. There's only a few houses there, but, you know, it's still, if there's people around, it's gonna be bad. So, I think what they're asking is that we talk to the quarry about, uh, doing that. And, and Mike, I think you talked to, uh, Dan Turner about the fact that they don't put water down this time of year, 'cause it's cold and it'll, it'll freeze.
That's correct. Um, and Mr. Turner, I had a conversation with him this morning. He went and talked to the supervisor over there, and they said, hey, you can't put water in it, it freezes this time of year, it glaze the road. Um, but they're working on something for early next year, like a new plan, and Turner's like, I'll, I'll keep you up to date on that, so.
Okay.
There is something in the works. Uh, Mr. Turner didn't know what it was, but the supervisor over there conveyed that, hey, they are working on something different, other than it's cold and we can't spray water.
Well, I think that's what they're, in fact, one of the, in fact, one of the guys told them to do that. He said, it's, it's really getting so bad, I don't want you to even sweep it.
Yeah, we got the same equipment, we're working it, if they're worn out, you're not on my sweep.
Only other problem I think is, is they don't, they only run the sweeper during daylight, right? But you've got past there, around twenty-four hours, that one was saying, so. And they're driving down the same road everybody else is, but the wash plant.
And they do it quite a bit, I mean, like about forty times a day.
Oh, yeah, it's twenty-four seven, I mean, it's, it's twenty-four.
I mean, they're sweeping it forty times a day.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Um, I know their, their permit has to have something on that, I would assume, I don't know what their permit is, but.
Bad thing is, it's not just out on that road, and in the road, it hurt me, it's from there all the way up our highway. Now, chief would probably tell you from your officers, you pull up behind them, it's constantly sifting out the back of the truck.
Yeah.
Somewhere works another.
So, there's some type of plan, and, uh, can we, can we get a time when we're gonna get a plan from them, or?
I can ask Mr. Turner tomorrow, I'll send him an email and have him, like, heard that, you know, more than just a conversation, like, hey, what can we do? Because basically, you know, we were told, oh, it freezes, so this is kinda what you have. But, but we're working on something for early next year, but Mr. Turner and I, I have no idea what it is.
Okay.
So, we can, uh, I'll send, uh, an email and have him see exactly what that plan is, other than just trying to put us off, maybe. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Yeah, I have Chief Helms, and then it's going to be, thanks. Chief, you have anything other than? All right. Sir? You're up. Do we need to close this on? Yeah. I need to pause real quick, you're all right. Then we'll go ahead and go to a public hearing, um, for Mr. Dave Critchis, Christiansen, sorry, um, about our community development block grant, correct?
Yes, uh-huh.
All right.
Okay, so I was here last year, well, actually this year, in January of two thousand twenty-two, for the first time, we were trying to do the, uh, ramps, and I think it turned out really well. Saw the ramps done, paving got done last week, so we're back doing it again, that's what I'm here for, so. You guys have hired us again to put an application, to actually kinda get some CDVG funds to do more ramps, and, um, what I did is, I met with Dan and Jason, we talked about the next section to do, and that's what I'm gonna show you tonight, and one requirement for the application is to conduct a public hearing, this is what we're doing right now. Uh, last January, we had to do a needs assessment survey, I remember doing that, we don't have to do that, I talked to Rosie, and she said, well, we did in January, it's good, so we're done, and no time at all. So, all we need to do is have this meeting, Shelly will take the minutes, we got, um, who showed up, the signing sheet, we advertised, we're doing everything that we need to do to get the money. The max money we can get is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so, that's where we started at, looking, we had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in them. This is the Americans with Disabilities Act, so, basically what it says is that you're supposed to make your ramps ADA compliant before your service erodes. So, last, in Ja- in January last year, we were trying to do two things at once, we're trying to do the ramps and res- and do resourcing projects, so as you all probably know, the.
No, we, we don't have, have this.
Okay. Okay, well, this is, this is what you should have had, but anyway, those are, okay, so let me, so what it is basically, is Burgess to Taylor Avenue, that will be your twenty-four paving sections, so we went through and looked at all the ramps that needed to be done, like Eleventh Street, those ramps are done, Eighth Street, those ramps are done, so these are the ramps that need to be done, to kinda do that whole section. So, that's gonna be your twenty-four section, depending upon how much money you have. So, just going back, blue is what you're gonna do this summer, and the ramps are done in the blue. Let me go back one more time, 'cause we did all the ramps for the blue, we just ended those three intersections done. So, going forward now, we're gonna. Going connecting the, from those spots, so. It's a pretty good deal, though, I mean, seven hundred thousand dollars you guys get every year, we're trying to get some more next year. So, I have just pictures of what we're talking about here, in case people wanna know, those are, those are your ramps right now, they're, they're not ADA compliant, and like I said, we'll go back as far as we can on each corner, as you saw in the last project, to the driveways, so. That's, uh, ninth, and Burgess, the ramps, here's Ten Street, Burgess, um, just kinda gonna, here's Twelve Street, I have to do those ramps. And thirteenth, so I just got pictures, in case anybody had any questions, coming back on Taylor Avenue, we're gonna make those ADA compliant. Says everything we talked about tonight. We'll get the documents from Shelly from tonight's meeting, after we answer some questions, and I will get that application submitted to Rosie at Jefferson County next couple of weeks, and then hopefully she gives the green light to do the project, did it, get it out to construction, hopefully in the spring, so. That's the plan, that's the deal.
Dave, could you briefly describe, I'm sorry?
No, go ahead.
Uh, could you briefly describe what the, uh, CDVG means for the, anybody who might not know?
Yeah, it's the Community Development Block Grant, and it, it's definitely different parts of the state of Missouri, so you guys, um, Crystal City have a LMI, Low to Modern Income Percentage, that's over fifty-one percent. So, because of that, you guys, DeSoto, Peebley, I think that's it, in Jefferson County, there's CDVG funds that, that can be used in those three communities. I don't think Arnold is there, I don't think about this, but it's you guys, DeSoto, and Peebley, and DeSoto has been using this money. And Rosie's allowing us to do these ADA ramps. Um, so. It's kind of a citywide thing, um, it's commu- and, and what happens is, the money comes from the state, goes to, uh, Jefferson County, and then she bowls up the money, and all we have to do is file this, this free lengthy application, and she, um, it goes to the Department of, uh, oh, what state department is that? Oh, what's that, kind of development, I'm not sure.
I think, I think it is. Was Rosie out there?
Well, Jefferson County's Economic Development Corporation, but I don't remember what state agency it goes through.
I'm not familiar with it either.
So, other, other, if you're not in Jefferson County, you're like, like I do, CDVG applications for other cities around the state of Missouri, and it's a competitive process, and in those cases, you can get five hundred thousand dollars per project, and, um, and that's what we do, which is really competitive in this case with you guys, it's just Crystal City, Peebley, and DeSoto, so it's kinda like, if we put it in and do whatever Rosie asks us to do, we get the money, so.
I doubt Hillsborough qualifies for those, I'm sorry.
Hillsborough money.
Yeah. I don't know. I, I know on some of those, the ramps and the sidewalks, like, the city's able to go a little bit further. Like, we take it, I had a couple of calls, like, hey, why aren't you replacing it? Past this, most of the time, I'm like, hey, it's okay, it's just not new. But in the, some instances, they were kinda bad, so we just were able to tag on with that, so.
Yeah, the reason.
It helps out.
So, we, we were, we were getting money to do the ramps.
Right.
And basically, I told Jason and our guys, I go, just take it to tie in all the way to the driveway approach, even though we probably could tie it in sooner, we're just tying it in there.
No, it works out well.
As far as we can, we can't go any further.
No, no, it, it's fine, and where you guys are going, you know, I mean, it, it looks good, of the ones that, it's.
I wish we could keep going with it, but, I don't know, she doesn't let us do it, so.
No, it's fine, two hundred and fifty is great, so.
I wish they'd give us five hundred a year, I mean, it's kinda, when you think about it, why not do the five hundred a year, what's the two fifty? So, there's these rules that they have that I don't necessarily agree with, because they have plenty of money sitting in the CDVG fund in Jefferson County. That's just kinda, so we're doing the same, you know, we keep doing this.
Is it people between us, Hillsborough, Peebley, two fifty each?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think the magic number is two fifty, that you guys, only two fifty a year, and then, DeSoto's been doing it for years on the sewer lines.
And they get the same, huh? They get the same two fifty?
Yeah, two fifty, and they just keep submitting the, the project, and Peebley's doing it too, and.
So, they do it with their sewer lines, and we, we do it with our ADA ramps, which, I mean.
Yeah, there's a reason that we're not doing the sewer lines, and.
I can find that out.
She has some, some deal with Crystal City was different than the other ones, for some reason, I don't remember what it was, but I, we could find out, Jason, if he was here, he might remember.
Right.
He's, he's talked to her, and he's really the reason, a couple of years ago, he started talking to Rosie and started pushing for this, like, you know, why aren't you guys getting the money?
Right.
I hate to start guessing, but it might be because, uh, Crystal City owns a, a sewage treatment plant jointly with Festus.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember.
I don't know. Okay. Um, does anybody have anything to, in the audience, yes or no?
I couldn't hear everything that was said, I just wanted to double check, you're saying that you're putting in teen cap accessible curb cutouts, and all those kind of sections, you're looking for, like, um, are they going to be the cutouts where you have the raised bump, the tax out bump?
Yeah.
And then, are they going to be angled at the corner, or are they gonna have, whether it's one direction is playing, one direction is playing?
Yes.
This is like one?
Yeah, yes, I have, yeah. We just did that project, if you see, you said that one map, I showed you, you might look at what we did, and we just did that on, uh, those other streets. I, I didn't have a finished picture, I wanted to bring one, but, yeah, it, it's going in direction, it's not.
Yeah, there'll still be that little section, it'll be a ninety degree on both of them.
I don't think we've done any like you're talking about in Crystal City, but I mean, I can't think of any.
I've only ever seen those in bigger cities where you have a lot of people that need to walk in, but the little island in the middle would be a trip hazard.
Yeah, I don't think we have, and I'm trying to think in Crystal City, we haven't, like you're talking about. Yeah, I don't think we have, and I'm trying to think in Crystal City, we haven't like you're talking about.
We did, I don't know if we still do, I think we got changed from, but I do know that one point I found myself a little-
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
I have no idea.
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be, I wish I had pictures, we tried to find pictures today, we couldn't find them file, had a great day. I'm sorry, it's unfinished pictures, but I think we finished pictures what we did, so this is- But you can see it's going to be going in both ways, both directions. Yeah, uh-huh, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I, I mean, not to go on that, but I think we had to redo a couple this year because the tactile things were a little too far, so it's like, we, I mean, they go- The tactile has to be right at that specific spot, because I think we had to redo a couple or some- Like redo the tactile place for that, so- Yeah, the new ones will go, you'll feel the new ones, and it'll be, it'll be good. You'll feel the new ones, and it'll go how it needs to be, because we have to get- In order to get that money, it has to be certified by the engineer, which is him, but-
Yeah, we'll make sure that those ramps are ADA compliant with what's being like you want them to be, yeah.
Dave, another comment that I've heard about the ones that we have done in the past is that, depending on where those are, sometimes the ramp bottoms out in such a way that it actually holds water at the bottom. So when you get water in there and then it freezes, then you basically have an ice patch, right, where people need to be walking?
Yeah.
If we could avoid doing that this time, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, it's one of those tracks, because they wanted two percent, which is super flat at the bottom on those, it's just really hard to do, and it's workmanship, you know, I think they've gotten- And that will, you know, we could put it on paper, right, all day long, but the guys out there doing it in the field, and I think the contractors over the last, let's say, five or ten years have gotten much better at it, but in the beginning when they first, when we really first started doing this about twenty years ago, everybody struggled making these right, so I don't know, and you're right, it's just sometimes that depending upon where it lands on the corner, on the hill, it collects dirt.
Mm-hmm, yeah. There's a couple that collect dirt, but I mean, Homer will clean it, or City will clean it up. I know there's one at Eighth and Lindsey that collects a lot of dirt there, so-
So now that it's paved, so now that it's paved, we'll see how those, how those do.
Okay.
And if one of them's an issue, you know, let's talk about it, see if we can-
Okay.
Fix it, but I mean, and that's the other thing, if you tell it's paved, it's really not functioning, it could be anything. But since it got paved last week, let's just see what happens, and it's just one of those deals where there's all these, you know, two percent this way, two, and it's just, it's really hard to do, but, and that's why they have issues sometimes, and we have to redo them a lot of times.
Right.
And it's, if you got contractors who don't know what they're doing, the guys out there, it's, yeah.
All right. Any more public comment on the public hearing for the CB? Sherry.
What is it cost, what is it going to cost the city?
Nothing. Yeah, the CDVG is going to pay for everything. Unless it goes up, unless the bids come over two forty, which they could, if possible, then the city would pay the difference, if there's, you know, five and fifteen thousand dollars it does. If it comes in over two forty, the city won't pay anything, so-
Up to date, we haven't paid anything for that, for the ramps.
Right.
I don't think we ran-
This came in last year, they underdressed it.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and that's why we're trying to bid it this winter, so we get good pricing, and, yeah, so-
All right. Everybody good on the, anything else on the- On the Community Development Block Grant? All right. Okay, legal counsel, perfect. All right, well, at this time with no more discussion, the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant is closed, so- Thank you, sir. All right. Yeah, hey Dave, good seeing you again. No? All right. Counsel liaison reports, Councilperson Fisher for Library and School Board.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Park Board, Ms. Schomburg. Councilperson Picarello is gone. We'll wait for Mr. Becker, I know they had a P and Z meeting. Thank you, Tony, for closing that.
See, we did have a P and Z meeting, and Mary, can you refresh my memory as to what was-
Uh, we rezoned for St. Pius on a condition of-
So there was a recommendation for the rezoning of a parcel. I don't have a, we're not taking any action on that tonight, right, Shelley? Okay.
No.
So I'll just briefly characterize it. Uh, there's a parcel that lies between what I would call St. Pius's front lawn and sixty-one sixty-seven that has been undeveloped for a long time. That was on the market for a long time, there's now a contingent offer on that property that is contingent on it being rezoned from commercial, which is how it's currently zoned, to our M1 Light Industrial District, which is how the hospital and St. Pius's property and a lot of other property in that area is all zoned that way. P and Z did make that recommendation to the council to approve that rezoning request, but that is not currently on the agenda for tonight.
It'll be in a month or two. No, I don't have anything to add, it was a continue of the M1, basically, Pius was already it, the rest of their front yard, basically, if they're getting that property. So P and Z unanimously approved that, so we're just waiting for it to make it to our hands, and then we make our decision.
Uh, it was the, it's complicated. Uh, there's an offer on the property from a private developer that is going to gift the property to St. Pius, but they're also wanting to put up a billboard there, which is part of the reason for the rezoning request, because our current zoning doesn't rely on billboards in a C1 or C2.
So, all right, thank you, sir. Councilperson Ginever, zoning appeals.
I don't have anything.
All right, and Mr. Kemper for Levy Commission.
I do not have anything.
All right, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on anything related to the previous council meeting on November twenty-first? Yes, sir, you may approach.
Yes, I am a esteemed member of the City Council, I'm here as a term for Heather Crosby. I've recently been retained by her to talk to you. She wants to, she's concerned about, evidently there's a ordinance, proposal ordinance about derelict buildings, and she wants to identify a problem that she has. Heather, as you may know, runs a nonprofit called The Project, which invites children to come in, and she encourages them to participate with community service and civic activities. And it's been a real boon to this community, and it's just been an amazing thing. And right across the street, seven twenty-four Mississippi, basically between the football field and the library, there's a building there that is literally falling down. It literally has no roof, it has solid waste all around it, and it's, until they go back there.
Convey that information. To my knowledge, we can talk to the building commissioner and go from there. Not to my knowledge, it's more of a storage lot, and the roof is falling in. And I know our new commissioner is sending out letters on some properties, and he's pretty proactive on that stuff, so we can convey that information, and I can keep in touch with you.
Um, and if I may, for the record, anytime I see kids going back there, the mama in me comes out, will you today? I told you, you know, that's not, um, I try to keep the kids out of that as much as I can, so that's definitely not to don't, um, activity, but they do. They tend to like to kind of weasel back there, and I notice them going back kind of into the wooded area back there behind, um, the building and such, and, um, I've gone back to look into, you know, hey, I said get out of here, um, and it's not safe.
All right, well, thank you, we appreciate it. Moving on to old business, we have none. New business, I have none. Takes us to ordinances and resolutions. Our first ordinance, you should have a packet in front of you.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you. Give you a moment to read through that, that is the modot agreement, I believe we've been working on this for quite some time. Uh, Jason informed me, Brandon looked over this, and we have his blessing on it, everything looked good on him. Jack brought up in the emails today, hey, they refer to Exhibit A, Exhibit B, and C. So Shelley printed those off for you.
I guess my understanding was they could have done this project with or without it, let us see.
To my-
Why do we need an ordinance?
I don't-
I thought that was the original plan, they could have come in and done it, and they just kind of, hey, big Crystal City, we want your input, we want your input, so I guess, I don't know why we really need an ordinance if they could just do it.
I think it's playing nice with the State Agency on that, because we need to work as a team on it. No, 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 I-
It takes five minutes, but do we really need it?
Right, um, Brandon, you know, he advises, yes, so I'm gonna defer to our attorney on that, but I don't- To my understanding, I know some of the business owners, they got a letter saying, hey, here's what we're giving you, and if not, then you get nothing, basically, so-
That was for the turn lane project.
That's, this is the turn lane project, yeah, so-
On these exhibits, it doesn't show it. The exhibits that are here show it going from Eighth Street to Bowman Drive, is that correct? Bowman?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, is the map here just show a little portion of that?
Yeah, they only, they only gave us a little portion of, yeah. They only gave us a little portion of that, so I don't, I don't know if they sent the little portion that was, you know, going to cause an issue, or-
I think the reason for that, and I'm just guessing, is that they actually needed to use some of the right-of-way for that section of it that is illustrated on the detail maps, uh, that is currently taken up by either Trelawn or Curb or something like that, that is- Whereas the whole highway is actually wider once you get up north of Eleventh Street, I think.
I, to my understanding, uh, it's, I believe, Twelfth there, and that's where-
Anyway, it gets wider to a point where it's less of an issue that they're widening the road by nine inches on either side or something like that.
And what's not addressed on this is the drainage, that's one of the main things, because when it rains, it floods sixty-seven there, and that is supposed to be addressed with this, so-
That, I think, is the answer to Ken's question. Our, the city's involvement is, we dump water into those storm sewers, and my position on this from the beginning has been, the state of Missouri wants to spend a couple million dollars improving the highway through our town, and I want to let them.
I agree. I agree with Mr. Becker on that. I'll entertain a motion to read Bill eighteen eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only.
So moved.
I have a motion and second, any more discussion on that?
Having said that, Ken, that's a very good question, why do we need this? That hadn't really occurred to me until you said it.
I got a couple of things, I think it's, we have to enter into an agreement with the Transportation Commission or whatever it is, so I think we have to memorialize that somehow publicly and in writing. I think that's part of it.
Maybe we do, but if we wanted to do anything with it, we couldn't, because they own it, so I don't see why-
Right, right, right.
They need our permission to do anything.
They have issues with stop signs, like, we have to get their blessing to add anything going to-
That was their original thinking on it, they were just doing, let us know courtesy and business owners, but they said, they could do it with, with our blessing.
So that was, that was the thing I wanted to bring up, there was a lot of discussion and business owners showing up here complaining about that, so does the debt all get resolved, or do-
Once again, yeah, once again, it's modots right-of-way, they want to let it.
And when, you know, the emailing us and stuff, I mean, they, it's their right-of-way, like, Mr. Kemper said.
The persons that have the most to say against it, it's already done in front of his building. The donut shop and the, it's already a turn lane there, it's already in front of his.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Nope, I agree, so Mr. Kemper. All right, I have a motion, I'm sorry, miss.
No, I'm good, I'm good.
I have a motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of Bill eighteen eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-two by title only, please?
Bill number eighteen eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only. An ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor, Mike Osher, to enter into a municipal agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for public improvements to Route sixty-one sixty-seven. Job number J six S three three nine one will consist of adding a center turn lane and pavement resurfacing from south of Brandon Wallace Way to Sixth and Eighth Street in Crystal City, Missouri.
All right. I move to approve Bill eighteen eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading.
All right, a motion's been made and seconded to accept Bill eighteen eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
I'll move to read Bill eighteen eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-two on its second reading by title only.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of Bill eighteen eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-two by title only, please?
Bill number eighteen eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading by title only. An ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor, Mike Osher, to enter into a municipal agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for public improvements to Route sixty-one sixty-seven. Job number J six S three three nine one will consist of adding a center turn lane and pavement resurfacing from south of Brandon Wallace Way to Sixth and Eighth Street in Crystal City, Missouri.
I'll move to approve Bill eighteen eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-two on its second reading by title only.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve Bill eighteen eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley?
Yes.
Councilperson Kemper?
Yes.
Councilperson Ginever?
Yes.
Councilperson Becker?
Yes.
Councilperson Fisher?
Yes.
Councilperson Schomburg?
Yes.
Councilperson Massa? Bill number eighteen eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-two now becomes ordinance eighteen eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Our next one is Bill eighteen eighty-eight dash twenty twenty-two. If you want to look at that for a moment. Uh, do we have the, I was just gonna say-
I haven't signed it yet.
Oh.
Do you want me to say a little bit about this?
Yeah, if you would like, Mr. Becker, if you want to.
Yep.
We had our meeting the other day.
So the city attorney gave us a briefing on why we needed to establish this procedure. The city's not actually taking any action on what this procedure allows this evening. We're just setting up a procedure for it, should it become necessary to do this later, and I believe, what would the technical term for this be? Condemnation of a piece of property, or?
Yeah, yeah. It just sets us up to follow along the guidelines, we have to do this, and then if there's a derelict property, and, yeah, it's not derelict, but then, yeah, the property being condemned, things like that. It just sets us up a process, because we don't have one as a city right now, so. All right, I'll entertain a motion to read Bill eighteen eighty-eight dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only.
So moved.
I have a motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of Bill eighteen eighty-eight dash twenty twenty-two by title only, please?
Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of Bill 1888 dash 2022 by title only, please?
Bill number 1888 dash 2022 on its first reading by title only. An ordinance approving procedures for development plans to be considered by the city pursuant to the Urban Redevelopment Corporations Law, Chapter 353 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri.
I'll move to approve Bill 1888 dash 2022 on its first reading.
All right, a motion's been made and seconded to accept Bill 1880, 1888 dash 2022 on its first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
I'll move to read Bill 1888 dash 2022 on its second reading by title only.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? I skipped that last time. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of Bill 1888 dash 2022 by title only, please?
Bill number 1888 dash 2022 on its second and final reading by title only. An ordinance approving procedures for development plans to be considered by the city pursuant to the Urban Redevelopment Corporations Law, Chapter 353 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve Bill 1888 dash 2022 on its second and final reading.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve Bill 1888 dash 2022 on its second and final reading by title only. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll poll the council on that. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemper?
Yes.
Councilperson Ginevra?
Yes.
Councilperson Becker?
Yes.
Councilperson Fisher?
Yes.
Councilperson Schomburg?
Yes.
Councilperson Massa? Bill number 1888 dash 2022 now becomes ordinance 1888 dash 2022, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, Jason's gone, so we have no admin report there. Mayor's report? Uh, Mayor's report is going to be a couple things. Uh, the wall with the cemetery, uh, I got ahold of Mr. Gray and talked to Curtis, our, uh, street superintendent, on a solution. Uh, just to catch everybody up, it's the wall that fell down on Mississippi a year ago. Um, it's, there's an impasse there. The city is going to basically pay for labor, um, then Mr. Gray has agreed to, uh, pay for sod and stuff for it to go back to roughly a three-to-one slope. The problem is, uh, around those amaranth poles. So, the amaranth poles are about $10,000 apiece to move. So, moving them is not a option for either party unless we want to drag this out to, uh, a legal battle, which I'm not in favor of, I just want to get it done. Um, so, with that being said, to just put a wall around those amaranth poles and take that wall back, which Curtis is, uh, our street superintendent, and he builds walls after, I mean, that's a, a local wall guy, basically. Um, using those existing blocks, he, he's like, a day. He can pull those blocks, put them back into the, uh, the cemetery in a day, and then two or three days to get rid of the rest of the blocks and just grade everything back. Um, we need to go to Brandon and have an agreement once, you know, and basically stay this, or state this. Mr. Gray is aware of all this, he's willing to sign that and us move forward on this. Uh, so the wall, retaining wall, will go only around the pole. This is only for the southern part of that wall. We gotta come up with something different there. I just want something moving on the lower section, so that the northern wall, we're gonna have to do something with that as well, but for right now, just to get a plan in place. Yeah, so, um, cost-wise, I mean, using the existing blocks, none. The blocks are 20 years old, Curtis looked at them as like, they're fine, they're concrete, there's not an issue with them. Um, it's our labor and Mr. Gray will pay for land cover and sod, whichever one appies to him. He's okay with those trees coming down when we go back to it. Um, there's a sign at the corner, if we need to tear down his sign to make our grave what we want it to be, he's fine with that. I'm not. I mean, it, it's...
What's our approximate cost going to be?
Our approximate cost is labor.
Yeah.
That's, I don't have, I mean, we have guys that, that, you know, I didn't actually figure up a cost on labor, because it's fixed anyway, I mean, I, I mean, yes, there's a cost to having those guys do that, but it's a fixed cost, we pay them anyway, is kind of how I looked at that. But, that's, that's what I've came up with so far. I know we've paid to have it surveyed, we've paid to do this. Um, Mr. Gray is, he's absolutely okay. If this doesn't work, going to court, and I don't want to pay Brandon to, to do this, to where we can, we can get this done and go from there.
Can they look at that more, walls or anything?
Uh, Curtis is... Curtis is great at, well, I mean, he built, not to, not to rope, not to rope you into this, it's still, uh, and, uh, I mean, it's, not to throw you under the bus there, neighbor, but...
Well, do you have an suggestion for that one, that might...
He can...
If it's a wet winter and spring, it's on par.
It, it's, it's terrible. I, I understand that. Um, he doesn't have any guarantee on that, other than pulling it off, digging out, because they just didn't use clean, clean rock back there to make sure that the water, the soil's what pushes that through, but the water saturates the soil.
Push down and see where you are, with all the water and everything.
That's a different issue, but, yeah.
It, it, yeah. Okay, yeah.
Um, I do have a question.
We're getting there.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, will there be something put in writing that says, after this is completed?
Absolutely.
We are no longer going to be responsible for anything future?
Absolutely. We have, we have no documentation of that. Um, and along with that, saying like, once we're done with this wall, the city does things which I'm completely okay with, like, if someone's back here, there's rock, or it's washing out. It's, it's not the city's responsibility, but in the past, the city, being a small city, um, will dump a load of rock there and help with erosion and stuff, which, you know, rock is cheap. I'm completely okay with that. Um, but I want, any time that we do that, a piece of paper saying, "This is not our, you know, it, responsibility." It's, you know, so...
Remind me again when that was done?
Uh, eh, 20 years ago.
20 years ago?
Two thousand.
Have we checked with, uh, Breeze's law firm? Wasn't Breeze handling the city stuff back then, right?
I believe so. Breeze and, yeah, because that was the...
I'm just thinking, wondering if they might have a box of city stuffs in the basement someplace.
He's retired, I doubt if he's, even if he would have something, he wouldn't know where it was at. I mean, it's worth asking, but I'm just saying, I...
We, this is where we're, I mean...
Just a, one more stone to turn over to make sure that we haven't missed something.
Okay. We can check with Breeze, and then if there's no information, move forward with Curtis pulling that all. I mean, our street guys, I mean, it's not a, a great option, I just don't like the wall being, it's falling apart and people look and we get, the city's built these walls all over town, actually, so I'm a little nervous on the whole, uh, we need to have that signed before they all fail and say...
The upper part of it's gonna have to be the bigger block, and they won't have to be as high or as many, but they're gonna have to be the bigger blocks, because the gray sites are right there.
And...
No, no messing with any of that.
We can't cut back on that, and Mr. Gray's aware of that. And those two-foot blocks, there was one of those poles that was closer than two-foot, um, on that, but we can, you know, we can explore those options. I just focused on the bottom wall at this time and, uh, moving forward on that. So, I can contact the Breeze Law Firm and see if they have any information. I mean, if we have something signed...
I mean, you're probably right, they probably don't, but it's worth asking.
Yeah, I'll check on it and see, and we'll move from there. So, uh, on December 9th, eh, in the park, we had sand in the park, it went well. A couple of us all showed up, it went well, the police, thank you very much. We had the, the fire chief was there as well, so, thank you for your officers. They had a good, it was a good evening, it was a good, uh, event for the community, so it went well. Um, I wish everyone a safe and happy holiday, basically. Have a, have a good time on my end, so. Let's go around to the council members for roundtable. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemper? Councilperson Ginevra?
Happy holidays, and, uh, I'm thankful that this is one of those holiday seasons when we don't have to have a whole bunch of closed meetings, and there's been too many of them the last 10 years. So I'm thankful that this was a good one.
Perfect. Thank you. Councilperson Becker?
Nothing, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Councilperson Fisher?
Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Excellent. Councilperson Schomburg? Perfect. And Councilperson Massa? Thank you so much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the regular council meeting. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Meeting is now adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.